Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the International Falls City Council to order. 5:30 PM, Monday, March 17th. Please rise and we'll say the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All members of the council are present this evening. We will move on to the agenda. Are there any additions and/or deletions? I am not aware of any. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Counselor Holden. Second by Counselor Buller. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Agenda is approved. Thank you. Next on the agenda, approval of minutes. I'd like to do them together unless there's discussion. Number one, minutes of the Monday, March 3rd, 2025, regular city council meeting. And number two, minutes of the Monday, March 10th, 2025, committee of the whole meeting. The chairman would entertain a motion to approve those.
I'll move. Second.
Motions by Counselor Kaler and Counselor Wagner. Any discussion on the minutes for March 3rd or March 10th? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Five zero. Thank you. Next on the agenda, payments of claims and approval. First is our transfers of $95,833.33. Next is accounts payable claims. City of International Falls claims $513,227.81. International Falls Public Library Board claims of $5,959.93. For a total accounts payable and claims of $519,187.74. Chair would entertain a motion to approve these transfers and payments of claims.
I'll make that motion.
A motion by Counselor Holden. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Wagner. Discussion on the payments and claims and transfers. Seeing no discussion, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Bills are paid. Five zero. Thank you. Next on this evening's agenda is audience open forum. If you'd like to come up and discuss anything with the council, and that is limited to five minutes. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Tyler Weir, 1201 Second Avenue East. With the new IFPD building, I just have a question. Have you guys looked for any grants or programs to assist the taxpayers on this by chance?
Mayor, if I may. Yes, the chief is currently filling out an application due into Clovishar's office by the end of the month. And you and I had spoke about those other funding options, and he is looking into those as well.
Yeah, the LESO 1033 program?
Yep.
Yeah, so I spoke to Brian Curtis. He's the state point contact for that. IFPD used to be a part of it back in 2010 was the last time they were a part of it. For the people that don't know this program, it's a military surplus program that law enforcement are able to use. They can get ammunition, guns, office supplies, vehicles, bulletproof windows, secure doors, cameras. I think a program like that would be very beneficial for the taxpayers, especially if you guys are going to move forward with making this new building. Talking to Brian, he stated a law enforcement officer would have to apply for it and then be in charge of doing the orders. And it's kind of like a catalog. Let's say you need 20 bulletproof windows, but they only got 10. You can take that 10, and they'll notify you if you need more. After 12 months, if it's for a building, the feds will come up and inspect the building, make sure everything was done correctly. And then thereafter, it's yours. From my understanding, things like vehicles, equipment and stuff like that, once you get it, you have to keep inventory every six months. And then after that, you're not allowed to sell the product. If it's damaged, you can return it back to them, or they tell you how to dispose of it. So I just wanted to make sure that people were aware of that program like that that exists. And it was a program that we used to be part of until 2010. I do have his information if anyone would want that. Brian Curtis, he's out of Minneapolis there. I got his email and I got his phone number. I've spoke to him for a couple hours about it. But other than that, you guys, like you said, Betty, you're going through Clovishar?
I believe it's Clovishar's office that he is putting a grant in through right now, yes. And if you have that contact information for Brian, please give that to me. Forward that to me, and I will take care of that.
Okay.
To the chief, absolutely.
Could you get me a copy, too?
Yeah, I can get you guys the info form. And like I said, that gets you into the, there's like a 12-page form that you got to fill out, send it back to them, and then from there, you can start ordering product that's available. I guess my other concern would be with moving forward with the IFPD building. What other buildings that the city owns that has to be repaired? I think when I spoke to you, Betty, back in February, I think you were talking about the fire hall as well. What are we looking at for price point on that for repairs?
Well, we had just, Mayor, if I may?
Yes, please.
We had done a facility study, and all of our facilities need some sort of maintenance updates and repairs. The council has prioritized what those needs are and what we'll be, you know, hoping to move forward with in the near future. And right now, we're working on prioritizing some of our street department garage spaces and spaces for the employees of that department.
Okay. I guess my biggest concern was with current city buildings that need to be renovated slash repaired, and moving forward with building a brand-new, or I shouldn't say brand-new, renovating another building. We should probably get a price point on how everything is going to cost, if that's something that you guys have available. I think it'd be beneficial to explain it to people, like, hey, this is how many millions we're looking at. We'd have to spend to renovate all these other buildings. I think as taxpayers, we should know. Other than that, I think that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll get that information to you guys as well.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mayor, council. Steve Blair, 1301 Seventh Avenue. I just have three points. I was asked to come here tonight to see if there was any changes in lease of the Park Building out there. If you've heard of anything, Betty, or the council, or the mayor, it's all, the lease agreements are all up to date, and they're moving forward.
Is, just because of speculation, and Senator Hostchild had a town hall yesterday, and so much is being discussed about cuts at the federal level, I'm assuming, is that what you're directing towards?
I believe that is. And I heard that they already canceled the lease, but I'm, you know, I just...
That is not any knowledge that we have. We have not been contacted at all.
And Betty would be the first to know, most likely, in all fairness.
But, okay, and second item was, I walked out here after the last meeting I was at here, and I was walking to my vehicle with a council member, I'm not going to name who, but the discussion was that we would be overlooking at the law enforcement center if the county was more favorable on their lease rate. Well, I called the county commissioner the next night after I talked to this gentleman, and he said that the lease rate has always been negotiable. It was at the bottom of the letter, always negotiable. So why is it that you're fixed on this lease rate from the county when they're willing to sit down at the table and say, well, what do you need? What is your bottom-line lease rate? I mean, is it $110,000 a year so you break even with the Cotaska Building? Because to me, it's not money. It's the location. And I'm sorry, I don't think it's a great location out there. I mean, if there's big petitions from neighbors out there that don't want it, why are you moving forward with it?
The council voted four to one to go ahead with the project. I don't personally support that project, but there's things that I'm probably going to support that others won't. So I want to touch on that. The last meeting, I think it was brought up about rescinding motions or not going ahead with it, and I asked for a motion, and I haven't seen that there would be support for that.
It's just my opinion anyways. It could, you know, a lot of people might like it out there. I'm sorry. So at the meeting I attended last time, there was discussion that we haven't spent a nickel yet. Well, this 10-page phase report from Kraus Anderson, did you get that free? Did they do that for free for you guys, or?
I am going to defer that because it's a question that I had, but when that came out, that was before I was seated as the mayor, I believe, in November. So as to when that was authorized, again, to administration and council, I can't answer that, but they may be able to.
It was just a question I had. And my last point is, last week, I was driving up to get lunch through Main Street at 11 o'clock in the morning, okay? There wasn't a single car parked on Main Street. They're like a ghost town.
Thank you.
My name is Joe Cantor. I live at 1601 13th Avenue West, International Falls. And, you know, police department having, asking for all these phases for money, what is the total going to be for the police department, International Falls Police Department, move in to that facility when they could share the building next door? I'd like to answer that question first. There's something, everybody's focused on that building out there. It just doesn't seem right. And my second thing I have to say is we have a water treatment plant that's in needs of upkeep in it. That's going to be probably the most expensive project this year in International Falls, to get that water building fixed up so it's correct. I came to the meeting here about the water treatment plant. It's got a lot of work that's got to be done. It needs a motor control center for all the electrical. It needs pipe fitters to come in there, a crew of them, and fix all the valves and everything else. And we're talking over $10 million. We're talking $12 million, easy, to fix that up. Now, where are we going to come up with the money with the taxpayers? Where are we going to come up with this money? When we got a police department worried about that, when they could just move into the, into the police department, or move in with the sheriffs? And give, save us all a big headache here, you know? As taxpayers, that's not fair for us to have to pay that much money.
Mr. Cantor, and I just want to point out, I'm not stopping you. I don't know where we're at on time. We are going to address in much more detail tonight, again, the water treatment facility.
Okay.
Just so you know that. I know I don't expect any decisions to be made, but there'll be some more info on that.
Yes, okay. Important, yeah, okay. Sounds good. I'm not going to go into can of worms here. There's more, but five minutes is good, so I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Okay, we will move on.
Last night, I lived at 601 10th Street, International Falls.
I didn't see your hand. I'm sorry.
I thought you were moving on.
I'm here as a concerned citizen with the conduct of this council, especially Mr. Kaler. I believe he should resign from this council for what he said under the mic, at least in two occasions. I heard it on the mic just the other day. It's not appropriate for one of our council members to talk that way to anybody under his breath, over top of his breath. He should resign. And if you guys haven't talked to him about resigning, then you guys should resign, too. We have a thing here. It's ridiculous what's going on in this town and other places. There's such a thing as integrity. Do you know what integrity means? Do the right thing. And I don't believe any of yous are doing the right thing. Letting it go forward from here. Not any one of yous. It just bothers me. It bothers me so much. I wouldn't get on the elevator with him today coming up here. That's how bad it is. He's got no right to talk and address anybody like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nagel. Is there any further comment this evening? I would also add, just to say something, Mr. Nagel, that there's going to be some discussion later on at the meeting regarding the code of conduct for city meetings, some questions that I have, not necessarily regarding any specifics, but more generalities. With that being said, we have opening of bids and/or quotes. Open and consider quotes for demolition of a trailer house located at 2210 Third Avenue West.
Thank you, Mayor. We did receive three quotes for this property. I will start with how they were received. They are dated and timed. And then I will turn it over to City Attorney Nelson, as she has additional information regarding this property as well.
Thank you.
So the first quote received is from Travis Thompson. That quote is in the amount of $3,894. The second quote is from Steve Boyham Construction. That amount is $3,249. And then the third one is from J&amp;J Contracting LLC. And that amount is $3,930.
I'll just add in now. So the council can accept the lowest quote. We have gone out for quotes. We've approved this. I did want to let the council know. We also don't have to accept any quotes. This is a unique property in that the trailer house being torn down is owned by one party renting a lot from someone who owns the actual ground it sits on. That person, who potentially we'd be levying those taxes against, the property owner, is willing to tear it down themselves, essentially not costing the city any money. But that person has requested to have until May 15th to do it. So I informed that person I would bring it to council. You don't have to accept a quote. We can allow the landowner to do it. Obviously, that's going to take more time. But if the council wants to move forward and accept a low quote, they can still do that as well.
Would the process be, if the council were to go with option B of letting it sit until May, then would we have to rebid?
That one I would defer. So essentially, we can hold off accepting any quotes, give them until May, and potentially accept those later. Best practices. It's going to be difficult to hold them to those quotes with such a long period of time in between. So the short answer is, is no, I don't think so. I mean, we could certainly ask out or reach out to those individuals or whoever wins the low quote and say, hey, will you tear it down after May? If this person doesn't tear it down, but that's just, that's kind of a bad practice, and I wouldn't really recommend it.
Thank you. Counselor Buller?
What kind of guarantee do we have that they will tear it down?
Just their word at this point.
Do we have any recourse? So if they don't tear it down, our recourse is to condemn it?
We'd have to re-quote it. We already have the condemnation. That's done.
Right.
But if they don't do it by May 15th, essentially, we'd be where we are today, having to re-quote it and go that route.
We're not owed anything by waiting.
Yeah, that's how I feel.
I mean, it could save us $3,200 if we wait and have a chance at it.
So...
Months away.
Yep. So you'd be looking at a motion denying all quotes, not accepting any quotes, and essentially tabling this for a later discussion if needed.
A motion to deny all bids, and then we would postpone this until after May 15th, depending on the situation at hand. Mrs. Riggs, if you caught that, I would ask if someone would like to make that motion.
I'll make it.
Motion by Counselor Kaler.
Second.
Second by Counselor Buller. More discussion on the topic. Seeing no further discussion, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion carries five zero to deny bids and give the property owner until May 15th to clean it up and hopefully save some money. Thank you. There's no old business. Moving on to the consent agenda. Approve necessary expenses for mayor, counselors, and administration to attend the 2025 League of Minnesota Cities Annual Conference, June 25th to the 27th in Duluth, Minnesota. There's some training in here for all of us that the league offers as a resource that I think is quite important. So with that, if there's a motion to approve, I would entertain it.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Counselor Buller. Is there a second?
Second.
No discussion? Call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Consent agenda is approved. Five zero unanimously. Thank you. We'll move on to new business. Discuss architectural design services for the band shell with Jim Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Counselor?
I'm Bob Beiman, General督督, International Falls, Minnesota, and...
I brought him along because he's good-looking.
Mr. Lukicik and I have a vested interest in how the band shell's redone. I've had concerns in regards to how long it's taken to do this and to get going. And I realize the insurance companies are tough. So I've reached out. I commend my counselor, Mr. Buller. He steered me in a couple directions of where we need to go. This is a no-brainer in my book. Jim is an architect. His building's at 209 3rd Street. He's been in architecture since 19...
77.
I didn't think it was that old.
Yeah. Cogill gave me my first job in June of 1977. So this year, I'll have been doing this for 45 years.
Wow.
Jim said, Mr. Lukicik said, that we will be playing in the band shell till we can't play any longer. And we've all attended different concerts there and things like that. So I'm just here to basically introduce him and maybe see where we're at, where the insurance company's sitting. And I understand I might be a little bit behind the eight ball because I think there was a meeting this week with Mayor. Mr. Buller?
If I may, I did meet with our adjuster on Friday very briefly, gave him the information that we have in questioning his quote for the value in which he is placing on the structure for replacement. And he was going to review that, and we're meeting again Wednesday morning.
Can you share with the community the figures that we have to rebuild this?
They're not definite, but they're about $570-plus thousand is where it's approximately right now. That's the dispute on that value.
Okay. I talked to Mr. Otto. Seems like a very nice man, very upfront. Said if we have a plan together, he'll write us out a check. As a community, I think, talking to Jim, I think we're going to be a little low. So we've got to look at some fundraising efforts or something to get this going. But I really don't want to sit on this, and neither does the community want to sit on it for another year. So we're willing to do whatever's necessary, whether we get a number-two shovel down there ourselves, or get some people in the construction field together that might be willing to donate some time. And I've gotten a little bit of the runaround about, okay, do we tear this pad up or keep it? And the insurance adjuster has said, that's up to you guys. Do whatever you have to. So that's where the engineers come in and that sort of thing. So I appreciate counselors, Mr. Mayor, and I'll let Jim take over.
And I won't take a whole bunch of time. You have a big agenda. I also offer this, that I know where you sit. I was Beltrami County Commissioner for 14 years. I was sworn in on January 7th and sworn out on the 8th. I fully understand where you sit. Your job is to represent your community. What I'm here tonight to do is to make a nice, a real easy offer. I'll give you my services pro bono to assist you with this project and make sure that we keep it very transparent. We put out a request for qualifications to reputable structural engineers that we need to do this project, primarily structural, a little bit of architectural services. But again, I won't gain financially from this at all. I want to donate my services to the city because it's my community. So as a point of reference, I sat on the task force for the Beltrami County Veterans Home. I sat on that for 12 years as a county commissioner and a citizen. We went through that whole process of getting engineers, getting designers, going through the whole process. I went to St. Paul and testified. We raised money. We actually raised privately roughly 5% to 8% of a $50 million project. I want to help. What I want to say to the council is, I'm here to help, and I'm not asking you to be handed anything. I will work pro bono. I'll help you out however I can. I have a lot of great experience to bring forward. I also have a lot of emotional tie to that for our good old buddy, Irv Peterson. He taught me how to play horn, and I actually own one of his trumpets that he sold me when I was in ninth grade. So a lot of sentimental value there. And there's a lot of sentimental value for me back to my city of International Falls. I currently live in Pamiji, but I'm in the process of retiring, and I bought a place on Rainy Lake, a piece of land, and I have a small place there. That's my starter retirement home. And I'm going to be spending more time here. And this particular project Bob and I have been talking about, and we didn't want to, you know, push or, you know, try to get in and do a whole bunch of, other than make that offer. See if there's something I can do to help you out in the form of a good building committee, a task force, to put it all together, bring it back to you folks. I've done this before, and I've... I've done this before, and I, and I've argued exactly the point we're talking about with insurance companies. We all know insurance companies, they're going to come in low. We come back and if we have good verification and good information to say that we need it to be valued more, that can help the case. So, I believe there's a good road forward on this. I'm willing to dive in, I'm back and forth from Bemidji to High Falls very often, at least once a month, sometimes twice a month. If there's more things going, I can be here on a, on a more frequent basis than that. Would really like to help you out. Again, all positive, that's my offer. I don't need any commitment, I don't need any money, I just want to help the community. I really want to have the alumni dirty dozen playing in that band shell and all the other people that can play in there. So, we'll make sure we get it ADA, handicap accessible, there's, there's ways of accomplishing that. We'll go through all of the, the scenarios of making sure that we work with the insurance company, and before anything's done, the council will know exactly what you're going to put forward, and if we got to put Bob and the, and the community forward to start raising some money to fill a gap, that's what we do. If you weren't willing to donate this service to the council, which we'll have to consider, what would this cost if you were here giving your best sales pitch and you were going to charge for it? So, so what you'd do in that case, Mayor, is you put out a request for proposals and qualifications, right? That's what you always do for any engineering or architectural job. And then what I'd do is I'd be back here at the table with the structural engineer that I know well and knows how to deal with these types of rebuilds, these types of structures, and we would come back with a proposal that says, here's our experience level, here's what we're going to charge you to do that front-end design work. And at this point, I haven't even looked into that to see what that dollar value may be. So, and, and I'd be willing to bet there's a couple of firms out there that would be interested in getting you a request for that type of qualifications and proposal to bring that forward. Thank you. Counselor Wagner, at the committee of the whole, you had a keen interest in the band shell, and so I know, I'm getting the feeling that, of course, summer is approaching, and this is a topic that I think matters deeply to many of our residents. So my understanding was not only were you going to come forward and offer your services for consideration, but that we would get an update to, which we have on the value of it. So, at this time, we don't have the settlement yet, but I think that there will be, I'm looking at the counselors, I know there will be desire to move ahead with this. So, take it under consideration, give it some thought, and just get ahold of, of Bob and I again, and, and whatever we can do to help, that's where we are at this point.
I'd like to welcome you back to International Falls.
Thank you, Mike. I didn't get kicked out of Beltrami County.
Well, that's good. I like hearing that, too, so, yeah. Thank you.
I, are you in communication with Betty?
Yeah.
Yeah, Bob has been. You have been, okay, yeah. So if we could make a note, unless someone wants to make a motion, if we make a note to keep this discussion going, are we getting the sense that the claim will be...
It's very close.
Very close.
So, I think it's probably appropriate, next steps might be to, you know, form a subcommittee and, of a couple of counselors and staff, and then invite folks like, you know, Mr. Lukicik to the table to continue those discussions.
Okay. Yeah, that'd be a great way to go. And are we, I looked through some entries, and we've paid Bolton &amp; Mink about $40,000 on the band shell. Are we, do we have, what have they done for us, and do we have any commitment to service? I don't know what services they've rendered, so that's a question as well.
They've been assisting us with the different pieces as we've moved forward, when we had to go through the tearing down with the asbestos, the abatement, and the, you know, doing the different pieces up to now, and they are helping in reviewing the quote that the insurance company received for the rebuild, and that's where we have some questions back to them. So they, they are assisting us as our city engineers.
Okay. I just, the reason I ask is to know if we had any investment in any engineering structurally as...
No, no, we're not, correct, we're not there yet.
Okay. And I, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I, I worked with Bolton &amp; Mink as a county commissioner, we hired them many times, they're a very reputable firm, they know what they're doing. We hired them for township remonumentation projects over the course of the 14 years that I was a commissioner. Very good firm, they've worked all over the place, and again, I'm, I don't, I'm not here to step on any toes, I'm here to help and to watch and to give guidance. I think I have some, some really good information for you, and I can, I can make this project a success and help you watch how it goes, and whoever you have in charge, I'll be behind them, looking at, looking over what's going on, because I, I understand that language, right? The engineering language and the insurance language in, in buildings, and the abatement and the, and the assessments and, and there's, it's so, there's so many pieces, but I'm, I'm familiar with all of them and have helped a number of clients go through that and work with insurance companies to make this a reality. So I'd really like to do it, I'm really fired up about it, Bob and I've had lots of conversations about it, and however I can help, that's where I stand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
Any other questions? We'll just wait to hear. You guys give it some, give it some thinking and give it some couch time and figure out how you want to move forward, and then just let us know if you'd like us to help you.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, I should just deal strictly with Betty then?
Yes.
I told before that Mr. Brokaw was basically in charge of this whole operation. Should I be dealing with him or Betty?
Well, the communication should go through Betty on this stuff. Do you, do you feel that way, Betty?
Yes.
Okay.
If she's talking to me after this meeting.
So, this will likely end up on subsequent agendas, so as the claim comes to an end and as long as you're in contact, we will wait to assist. Thanks for getting us on the main agenda tonight, I know you have a, you have a full slate, so I appreciate you getting us in early.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
If I may share, I, on the news the other day, they had a picture of the band shell in the city.
No, can't.
And it looks, it looks horrible.
Mr. Blair?
No.
We have to...
Can't.
Item two, acknowledged letter of resignation from Counselor Holden as President Pro Tem and Chairman of the Budget and Finance Committee.
Well, I'll move if you're...
If, if that's what you'd like, yeah. We have a motion to accept that letter of resignation by Counselor Kaler, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Wagner. Is there any discussion on the topic, Counselor Holden?
No, no discussion.
Call the question.
Aye.
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 All vote yes. Motion carries four zero, and Counselor Holden's resignation from President Pro Tem and Chairman of Budget and Finance is accepted, thank you. Number three and four, these could be one position or they could be two, historically, I believe they've been one, which is selection of a President Pro Tem, or better known as the backup mayor, and to fill vacant Budget and Finance Chairperson, I have not received a great deal of interest in this position. Counselor Bowler, do you have any interest in this position? Counselor Wagner?
No, sir.
Counselor Kaler?
Not, not, not at this time.
Okay. Well, we will take no action. I would accept a motion to table items number three and four until further discussion is required on the topic.
So moved.
Of a motion by Counselor Wagner?
Second.
Second by Counselor Bowler, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All vote yes. Motion carries five zero, items three and four are on the table. New business number five, consider approval of memorandum of cooperative agreement for implementation of the Rainy River, Rainy Lake Comprehensive Watershed Management Plan. Jason, do you have anything you'd like to add to this or any discussion? Is there any question from the council?
No, and this, we've had it before, the, it's just a memorandum, understanding, not, we've already, there's no financial obligation, but it's memorandum of the, it's a volunteer program, us, Koochin County, and Rainier to help with water conservation, let's say, shoreline management, things like that, and we're hoping to get approved sometime in April, once we get the memorandum signed and that, and hopefully get some money from Bowser and the state to help with some of the programs we'd like to do, so.
Okay.
I guess that's my way of saying I'd recommend passing it, so I'll make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion to approve this memorandum of cooperative agreement, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Holden, discussion. Question?
Aye.
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 All vote yes, this is approved on a five zero vote, thank you. Number six, adopt a resolution supporting the International Falls Koochin County Airport Commission for Bond Funding for the Reconstruction of Runway 422 and GA Apron Phase Four Project at the Falls International Airport. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Counselor Holden, is there a second?
No second.
It's a second by Counselor Bowler, any discussion?
We've already, did we already approve this, did I understand that right, but there's some different language in it, or?
If I may, Mayor?
Yes, please.
There was an email on the backside from Kyra, and it's the updating to the Runway 4-22 and Apron Project, and it is still part of the 2020 capital bonding request, but they needed an updated resolution for those two pieces of the project.
So it's the resolution specifically that needs to be updated?
That is correct.
Okay. We do have our motions, any discussion further? Question?
Aye.
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 All abstain, this carries four zero, thank you. Item seven, update on water treatment plant rehabilitation, open house, I'm happy to share, Mr. Brokaw is here as well, do you have anything to add? I see you're on the agenda, so it's not, I'm not putting you on the spot.
Wish we would have a little bit more involvement, without the conversation went well.
I would like to add to that, that I think the entire council was in, in attendance except Counselor Holden. No business was conducted, obviously. Was pleased with the presentation and the, the facility is obviously quite remarkable and the story of how we ended up with the plant and how it served us. I think there's, I, I'm certainly not questioning anything that needs to be done at the plant to get us into the next 40 years. I am the most concerned about naturally how we're going to fund that rehabilitation. It's not a contraction yet, it's not an expansion, it's a rehabilitation. So, with that, and I want to double check so we don't cover two topics at once, Senator Hostchild was in town yesterday, I met him for lunch before the town hall and reiterated the importance of this project and assistance which we have applied for. Our lobbyist, Rob Eklund, has had bills drafted for us in both the House and Senate. Tentatively, they may be heard in committee on March 25th. That amount is for 4.8 million, and I think at the moment, 12 million for the rehabilitation is that the magic number where we're thinking this is going to come in at. So at the open house, there were some different, there was one finance charge suggested to pay the debt off that we would incur to rehabilitate the plant, which was a debt service charge, and I think that a lot of those things are yet to be determined. I just would like to state the importance of the project, I think that the council is in agreement on that. But I'd also like to state that I believe that the affordability of it hopefully will hinge on us getting some assistance. There was a KETA meeting this morning, Representative Scrabble was there, and he has warm feelings towards whether there'll be a bonding bill or not. So it's my hope that we can get that assistance.
And the good news that there is a bonding bill, this is the type of thing they're looking to provide money for, understood, right?
Understood.
Yeah.
The, the only thing I would add is that if there's bonding, it would most likely delay, the bonds aren't ready tomorrow, the state has to take the size of the bonding bill, issue the bonds, and that all takes time. We did a bonding project last year for a snowmobile club, and it took about nine months to get the bonds issued. Anything more on water treatment plant? And Ted, thank you for the explanation along with Brian at the open house. Next on the agenda, Public Works Committee, recommendations, discuss response letter to Pleasant Hill Baptist Church regarding parking lot concerns. This has been 2020?
Before my time.
Mine, too.
Yeah. I believe that was the date, somewhere around there, from when they did Pleasant Avenue, whenever that was.
Betty, because I, you were here when this began, and we would like some closure on this at some point, is there anything specifically that stands out in verbiage?
Well, Mayor, if I, if I may, that, you know, this project, like you indicated, was 2020 and 2021, they had done a reconstruction of that area. Pleasant Hill Baptist Church allowed contractors to use their property and then are coming back and asking for assistance to repair some of the damages that happened. We've met with them multiple times, spoke with them over the phone a few times, and at this time, we even offered them to, you know, take the route of contacting our insurance company and, you know, letting that process take its, its, you know, place and roll that through, and they never did do that. However, they're still now, you know, coming back and asking the questions, so I think it's something that we need to, you know, send them a letter indicating what our findings are and, you know, giving them that option and then closing the door on, I mean, the concern.
Yeah. And I've reviewed the correspondence and I'm comfortable with that being that there has been communication, I've been there twice before it snowed, so. With that, I would entertain a motion to have a letter drafted to Pleasant Hill Baptist Church. Tom?
I'll move.
Second.
Okay, motions by Counselor Kaler and Holder, or Holden, excuse me, any discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 Although yes, letter can be drafted unanimously, five zero. Item B, adopt a resolution to Public Facilities, 2025 reimbursement resolution establishing procedures relating to compliance with reimbursement bond regulations under the Internal Revenue Code, Ninth Street and Sixth Street Water Main Projects, Chair would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Counselor Buller, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Wagner, any discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 Although yes, motion carries five zero. C, adopt a resolution authorizing execution of the Minnesota Clean Water Partnership Project Loan Agreement for the International Falls Sanitary Sewer Lines Improvement Projects, Chair would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move.
I think Counselor Wagner was first, Counselor Kaler can be second. Any discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 Although yes, carries five zero. D, adopt resolution calling for capital improvement plan, public hearing on intention to issue general obligation capital improvement bonds scheduled for Monday, April 21st, 2025 at 5:30 PM, City Council Chambers, City Hall, right here at 600 Fourth Street. Is there a motion to approve the hearing, scheduling of the hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Counselor Holden, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Wagner, discussion?
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
We do have, George Ilardson is online with us today, if you guys have any direct questions for him as, as part of this process?
I just have a little, we could probably make it easy for George, the, the hearing for these bonds is for two sets of bonds, correct, for Ninth Street and for the Public Works Rehabilitation, which has already been approved?
Mayor and, and members of the council, Mayor, would you like me to address that question?
Judging by the silence in the room, yes. Thank you.
Okay, perfect, perfect, thank you. George Ilardson, Northland Securities, and so, Mayor, members of the council, this resolution tonight, you know, just like it was stated, it's simply to call for the public hearing on April 21st, and it's really just, we're working with the city on structuring kind of a comprehensive project, one that you, you can finance, as long as you're doing general obligation bonds, you can package different projects together to make it more efficient, and, and so the public hearing is only required for the renovation of the Public Works garage, equipment garage, and sewer vector garage, so other parts of the bond issue are not necessary for this hearing, but it's really only those two Public Works
I just, with, oh, go ahead, Counselor.
No, no, I'm just.
I just want to make sure that we're getting enough information out about it, because this is, doesn't happen every day, so this is the hearing on the intent to issue the bonds, and not the City Council authorizing the bonds, because the City Council couldn't authorize them without a hearing, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Ilardson.
Yes, thank you for the questions and the time on your agenda.
Are there any more questions for him, I should have asked first? Don't believe there is. With that, Chair would entertain a motion to approve scheduling this hearing.
I'll move.
Aye.
Motion by Counselor Kaler, second.
Second.
By Counselor Holden, any discussion on scheduling the hearing? Question?
Aye.
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 Although yes, this carries five zero. E, approve agreement to transfer the donated Level Two Charger back to Minnesota Power and approve a charging station easement agreement for the new DC Fast Charging Station, Chair would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motions by Counselor Buller and Counselor Wagner, any discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 Although yes, this is approved, five zero, the city is out of the charging business, thank you. Item F, approve Water Department trailer purchase in the amount of $9,650 from all season equipment from Fund 403, which is Water Capital Outlay, Chair would entertain a motion to approve this purchase.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Counselor Holden, is there a second?
Second.
By Counselor Wagner, discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 Although yes, trailer purchase is approved, five zero, thank you. Number nine, Committee of the Whole, recommendations, discuss moving forward with the General Obligation Bond Proceeds Grant Agreement, design grant for the International Falls Health and Wellness Center project. Regarding this, I have spoke with both Representative Scraba and Senator Hostchild, the grant would have to be used for its intended purpose, if, is what can happen is by, if we, if the council decides not to use the money, they will go back to the Chairs of Capital Finance in the House and Senate and say, hey, the city had this money that went back in the pot that they didn't use, essentially ask for priority, which has kind of been what the discussion has been. The priority this year has been the aid that's been applied for, for the water treatment facility, so that's the update that I have on that, those bonding funds that are available to design a new Cary Park. The council worked on Cary Park for a period of time before my time, so floor is open.
So if we don't, I mean, if we don't do anything with it, we give it back, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
We can't use it for anything else?
No, not unless, no, it would be imperfect, but it, basically, it, they would allow you to use it for something else, but you have to restart the process, so. I believe that we've had this on the agenda to keep the evening moving, Deed has been asking what we're going to do.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, the Director of Public Works has been working with members of Deed, completing the application, and it, from my understanding, it's sitting, waiting, ready to, to go, if we are going to move forward with the project, to release the, you know, to allow for release of the funds and move forward with the engineer and design.
Is there anything specific the council is looking to do?
Is that amount, Betty, is that amount going to cover the whole design process?
I am going to defer to the Director of Public Works if he does know that off the top of his head, he's been working closely with them.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yes, so the million dollars will cover the design of the wellness center itself, it does not cover the rest of the compound per se as, as replacing the playground, the spray park, but it would cover the wellness center itself.
Yeah, basically, the, I mean, the steps with it are, the first million dollars is going to go towards engineering, and then the process would historically be, we figure out what we want, and then you go back to the legislature, and then depending on the size, it would typically go into phases unless it was not over four or five million. The, I think, our old lobbyist and our new lobbyist have been fairly adamant that this project would not receive priority if we were to pursue it. I personally would like to see us offer this up towards the water treatment facility as an olive branch.
You mean to ask if we can use the money towards the water treatment plant, that's what you're saying?
Well, we would, yes, but it would, the process would be, the council would have to just walk away from this, and if we did that, basically, our current lobbyist to is Rob Eklund, would go to the legislature on our behalf and say, you know, we want 4.8 million for the water treatment facility, and we just gave you a million dollars back
Mayor, if I may, just as a reminder also, we did have a study done on the current Cary Park facility, I'm not going to be able to quote the dollar amount, but the facility is in need of desperate repair. I believe there's a compressor or something currently down right now, waiting on parts, running on one only, so if we don't continue to move down this road, we are going to need funding to figure out what we're going to do with the current facility, as we had that facility assessment that was done and presented a few months back, it's been a while, but we do have that study that is in front of you as well.
Thank you, Ted. Go ahead, Counselor Buller.
Hang on, Ted, if we had, if we had, I mean, we're giving a million dollars for design on that building, and that's it, that's, it's either we use it or we lose it. So if we do go through with it and do have that design done, can we put that on the shelf then, when we get to the point where, you know, where this needs to be done? I mean, it's all going to be taxpayer dollars if we have to, if we have to rehab that building, there's not going to be any money given unless we can have a bond go in it, and we're going to have to have this design for the bond, so are we better off going ahead and doing it yet? And get that design, and put it aside, and have it ready when we can, because if we don't have a design, we can't submit to bonding either. So if we have the design sitting there, and it comes to the point where a couple years down the road, if something looks like they're going to be doing some bonding or something like that, we, we've got our, we've got our first receptacle.
That is a, a school of thought, my concern is more geared around that I, I'm only one school of thought on this, but I don't think that we're in a, that the community is going to support taking on any non-necessary debt, and is what we've seen with all these projects is that they have overruns, the management of them costs more, and that's not to say that that's where this project is headed, so, I just, I, I'm thinking of the projects we have going on right now, the Public Works Rehabilitation, the eventual police facility, the water treatment facility, then we have construction side of things, and some of those things aren't funded out of, they're out of different pots of money that are there for specific purposes. So I would entertain a motion. Go ahead.
For Mr. Brokaw, if this, if we did the design thing with this money, will that point out issues with the current building?
Counselor Wagner, I believe we've already done that with the building assessment.
Okay.
With, with the current building, the way it sits, I think, you know, you've got to look at, do you want to be in the arena business, or do you want to be in a wellness center business, because there are two, you know, the wellness center is a lot bigger, it's, you know, you know, or are you going to be in the one sheet ice business?
Or neither.
Or neither.
Because that's where we're headed.
Yeah. Well, that's been discussed. I mean, it has, what is it, March 17th? I think that's come up at least monthly.
So we got a shot at using this one million towards the water treatment plant?
No.
No? No way? They won't let us use it for?
It's a bargaining chip.
That, okay, well, a bargaining chip then.
Yes.
I know a water treatment plant's number one priority, no doubt, it's right up as one of the top.
Well, I, sitting here, the water treatment plant is something that we, obviously, it's an essential.
And like my comment at Public Works, my only concern is, we got this bonding money to make the design, but then we don't want it, you know, what precedent does that, or does this happen more often than I would think, that, you know, they go through all the process of doing it, you get your bonding, they give you the bonding, but then you come back and say, ah, there's been, things happen, right, you know, and hopefully they can understand that, that's my only concern for, if we happen to go for something else again, you know, not necessarily the treatment plant, but something down the road.
Well, that had, that's been discussed as well, and I think that the discussions that I've been privy to, that the discussion is around long-term affordability of the project, and that's something, the city of Virginia being the classic example, and some others, that those projects were awarded relatively quickly, and in some instances, they've really affected the town and their levees significantly.
Well, they didn't have the money for maintenance.
Right, and that's.
They got, they got money for the building and stuff, but they didn't have the money for the maintenance, and they ran into problems.
Well, they, I believe their levy, it went up over two or three years significantly to cover that side of it.
I think though, tonight, what we need, we need to make a decision one way or another, are we there, is that, unless someone thinks their position's going to change, we might as well make a decision.
I would.
Can you reword the motion again? Oh, you want me to word it? To return the money to the state, maybe, or how do you want to?
Well, it would essentially be that we don't proceed with the grant, and using those funds.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion on the floor by Counselor Wagner, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Holden, is there any discussion, further discussion on this topic? Question?
Aye.
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 Although yes, motion carries five zero, thank you.
Thanks, Ted.
Moving on to number 10, I would like to circle back to this, which is why I put it on the agenda, it's Resolution 27 dash 13, which was adopted one July 2013, so before I was seated as mayor, I got a packet to sign up and report for duty, and there's a separate page to this, which I don't have, that asks me to sign it, which I did, has anyone else signed that?
I assume I did. I assume I did.
So, you know, we, there's some concerns about things that are being caught on microphones or at a previous meeting. And I'm steadfast in my personal belief that I do not feel comfortable making accusations, nor am I going to. But, my question is, what, what does this mean? You know, if, if we, somebody drew this up, and I, these weren't probably the funnest of times when this was drawn up, but, and in full disclosure, Chelsea, I did not talk to you about putting this on the agenda, so, is this guidelines, I mean, there's no action that can be taken based on this resolution, is my take on it, but I'm not an attorney, and I am putting you on the spot, but.
No, that's okay. So, I did see this when it came out Friday, so I did do a little research over the weekend. It's not uncommon for cities to have code of conduct. The slight difference with what I found for our city and other cities is code of conduct is kept separate from decorum in their bylaws, which is the equivalent of our charters somewhat. So, you technically can, in enforcing decorum, not necessarily the code of conduct, which is where it gets a little tricky for our files, because they, it's used synonymously here, is the code of conduct, decorum, that's, that's used as one. Any member, council member can make a motion to censure a council member. And what censure means is, take notice of certain conduct, admonish the conduct, and express that disapproval, and recall order. But that's essentially all that I've found on it. We don't have bylaws, like I said, nor do we have a specific list for decorum, other than the code of conduct, which, like I kinda said, the falls, uses those synonymously. But that's as much as I found.
Okay, thank you. With that being said, I'd like to move on to number 11, which is to discuss Resolution Number 5611. The only reason I'm aware of this is because I, two years ago, at a truth in taxation meeting, Mayor Droba was visibly upset about this resolution and the city's finances going forward. And this resolution, basically, to boil it and condense it all down, states that 50% of the year's general fund budget at the end of the year should be in reserves. And some of that probably can be up to interpretation. I pulled the fund balance sheet from the end of 2024, and I think it's concerning. And, so, I believe the auditors pointed it out. So, I, you know, this was, I'm concerned, these were fairly heady times when both of these were passed, and I just, maybe they, I think it's concerning, for not following them. And I don't think that the general, what I perceive as a general fund issue, and its solvency going forward, I don't think necessarily points to the ambulance either. We do need assistance, hopefully, on that, but I just wanna let the council know that ultimately, I'm not, I wanna make it really clear amongst the council, this is us. This isn't department heads. If we think that things are not, are out of whack, that it's our decisions that are going to ultimately give the direction to change course. So, with all the spending that's going on, and some of it without question is warranted, the water treatment plant, that's a pretty, pretty necessary thing to have good, clean-piped water to our homes. Number 12. Discuss auditor and hiring an outside consulting firm. This is another addition of mine. And, the reason I put this on there is if we're not in check, and we need to make some decisions to get to where we need to be, well, maybe we should ask for help. And I'm happy to do that. I think, it's a start. For any of that, we would have to make a council action. But I don't know the level of concern that the council presently has. The four of you have been on the council for some time and sat through the audit reports.
We've gone through the auditor reports, like, every year. And for quite a while, we used the same auditor that the school did, same company. And, you know, they did a good job of auditing everything, so, I guess, I always thought we were going good with using professional services and using auditor, and did the same as the school did, they used a professional auditor. They gave us a good report. Never thought of it as any problem, Mayor.
Well, I think, I appreciate that, Counselor. I think that, you know, the auditor, when they give us a bill of clean health, I think they're looking for many other things, but I don't know that it's necessarily their job unless we hire them for something specific to tell us that we're potentially broke or headed there quickly. So, Counsel, or, excuse me, Administrator Bergstrom.
Mayor, if I may, our auditors will be beginning a week from Monday, our 2024 audit. And each year, this, this resolution comes up in the conversation. I encourage all of you, as the finance officer indicated, if you get those questionnaires, please reach out to them. You know, answer those, so they can do their, a good job, their due diligence of our, of our audit annually. If there are specific concerns, we can always ask them to look into anything specific, if something has, any of you have that. But, as their firm, we have one main contact. However, they have a team behind them, and they're changing and rotating from time to time. But, they're, they're checking all kinds of things, all the time. I guess I'd just encourage you to bring things to us that we could ask them to look at further, if you so choose. We are, have approved a contract, a professional services with them, to conduct our 2024 audit. I don't know if we'd be able to get out of that without paying them, if that's what you are, you know, asking to do, and go a different direction, and if we would have to request proposals for a new auditor, or if that's, you know, what you're, what you're asking. But, they are scheduled to start a week from Monday.
Thank you. And I don't have a problem with Schlenner-Wenner, so I do not wanna do that.
Okay.
I, I would, if I was gonna discuss, I think, auditing, it would be on a different basis, perhaps third-party, a different opinion. But to get there, that would be, you know, if we looked for some consultation, otherwise. But I just wanna know, is it a concern of the council? And, I, I'm not, I don't wanna make it sound like I'm setting this up, but I watched this for years as a concern, every year, and this was talked about, and I don't know what's changed. So, that's why it's on the agenda. If something catastrophic were to happen, it's gonna fall on the five of us, and that's why I have the level of concern that I do. With that being said, I'd like to move on to number 13. Is there any other business to come before the council, from council or administration this evening? Seeing none, we will move on to reports of all boards, committees, and department heads. Reports of the administrator and attorney, please.
Mayor, I have nothing additional this evening, thank you.
I have nothing additional.
Okay, thank you. Reports from committees, boards, and commissions. No reports?
I did find out today that our, our reorganizational status has hit the House floor today, that we've been working on over at the North Gooch. And so, hopefully, that's gonna be going where we can reorganize the, the board to have the right representatives for the right areas because of the the increase in, in East Gooch and, and different, different things, so. It's been three years, so.
Yeah.
Pretty happy to see that hit the floor finally, and.
And we, yeah, then we just learned at Tita this morning.
They, they were hoping that, yes, they were gonna get on there.
Also, I would add that, thank you, Counselor Buller, there's police and fire reports in the full packets that are available to our citizens. That being said, audience, open forum is open, limited to five minutes. If you have any questions or concerns, please come forward.
Hello, Susan Wadega, 107 Park Avenue. And I just want to commend you all for your vote on number nine, I believe. It's a hard decision, no one likes to not move forward with things like Cary Park, the Wellness Center, all that stuff, so I know that was a hard decision. But I commend all of you for making that hard decision, because we have priorities of needs versus wants, and no one likes to make that decision, so thank you. And, I have a question then on number 11. Where is the percentage of the reserve at from this time right now? Do we have that percentage?
That's a, I believe that's calculated on a year-end basis, at the end of the year, so, the flows of money throughout the year are obviously fluid.
Right.
And when we receive our LGA, our payments that the county handles to us, and some other revenues. So, I don't, I would defer to anyone but me if there's a metric used throughout the year to meet that, or if that's.
Could I, maybe if I ask, what is the last known one that we would have, like, for a set? Because, I mean, there must be a date, like, is it January 1st, that you come up with that number after the audit for year end, like, right now, you're looking at 2024 audit, so would you have 2023?
The, the city sets its budget, which then it approves its levy, usually in December, in which the general fund is budgeted for. So, the number for the, for the end of the following year would be, with some contingencies, 50% of the budgeted amount for the general fund.
Okay, so maybe I misunderstood number 11 then. Could you elaborate on that some for us, is that possible?
I put it on the agenda because I'm curious where we're gonna be at the end of this year.
Right.
Which is a concern of mine, and I, did the general fund budget for this year, I think it was around 7 million, round numbers. So, essentially, if we were following that resolution, we should have an able fund balance of general fund reserves of 3.5 million.
Right.
Yeah.
But if I may, that's not just cash. There's other variables in speaking with the auditor, and I'm not gonna claim to know all the intricacies of that formula. There are other things that go into that, so, I, I would defer to our auditor to help, help better explain that balance to all of us.
Okay, all right, well, thank you. And thank you again for being cognizant of the budget for the city, because we're looking at a lot of money right now, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Nancy Imhoff. I live in Little Park, but I own a business on Main Street, Mason's on Main. Pay local taxes with that one. Kind of repeating what Susan was saying. So, is there a number on that general fund balance currently? Can you share that? What, is there, where are we at?
What, what, we would have that information through the end of February, I believe, right now.
So, current, what, can you share that number, what it might be?
Absolutely. I, I would, I'm gonna add a great deal of caution to this, though.
Okay.
That we get, like, most of us who are still working and get our paychecks, money comes and goes at different times.
Sure.
I think I have it. Or I left it on the desk.
Mr. Mayor, could we have Emma come up and help with this?
Absolutely, I was trying. Thank you, Emma. I thought I, if I had it in the packet, or the council did, it was left on my desk.
So, this is the resolution to which he's speaking about, so I'm just gonna clarify a little bit. So, the resolution in question is a resolution that implements GASB 54, and establishes a fund balance policy. And in the resolution, it indicates that the city shouldn't slip below a 50% threshold in its general fund. Upon me taking this position, I did inquire with our auditors if there was a point of reference in which I could do the calculation on my own, on a month-to-month basis, as a part of our bank reconciliation process. Because of the nature of the calculation, and because of, as City Administrator Bergstrom indicated, there are other things, including fixed assets and other notable things that factor into that calculation, is not something someone like myself can calculate. It is calculated strictly on an annual basis as a part of our audit. So, when we receive our audit package and report at our budget finance meeting in June, we should know that number. I believe if I, this is just kind of spitballing, if I remember the December 31st, 2023 number, we had slipped just slightly below, we were at, I believe it was a 48 or 49%, so we weren't marginally off from that. But it was a point of reference that we, we did have a discussion of, this is, you know, we are at a point where we need to be cognizant of that. So, not, you know, deathly alarming, but something to be cognizant of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emma.
So, are you saying, like, if your budget is at 7 million, you should have, like, 3.5 million in the general fund, is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Yes.
Okay. So, we don't know right now, as of end of February, what that was?
Well, Emma did make the comment that there's fixed assets and everything included in that too, not just cash.
No, but.
So.
You still have to have a number on paper at some point to start figuring what the fixed assets from that would be.
There's certainly times, I'm comfortable with this, there's certainly times throughout the year, where if we had to take into account fund balances that are negative and got called on the carpet, I think it would be safe to say that the city would likely be insolvent.
Wow.
So, that is some of the concern about the spending. That.
Well, that should be an eye-opener. I guess I feel like if that's the case, all these million-dollar projects just need to be on hold until you can get to a place where it's even feasible to move forward. It's just, otherwise, it's just us taxpayers that are gonna pay for all of it, which, we're gonna pay for most of it anyway, but I don't know, that's, my other concern is, I know my time's almost up. That's, my other concern is, I know my time is almost up, is still the law enforcement center. I think that's a terrible location, just my personal opinion. It's not user friendly for the community. It's, we don't even know how much it's going to cost. Maybe 1.6, it might be three, it might be four, when you consider the phases. In my opinion, the best solution is moving to the old LEC where the PD can have their own separate place. I know you're paying rent and it might be a little higher than you want, but somebody else said the county's still willing to negotiate. Say you pay 110,000 a year over, say you had to sign a five-year lease, that's, you know, 550 or whatever thousand, it's not, still not 1.6 million or three or four million. So I really think you got to rethink that. But thank you for stopping the process on the Cary Park. I think that's important.
Mr. Mayor, Steve Blair again, 1301 Seventh Avenue. Sorry for, oh, speaking auditor there on that, uh, band shell, but when I was watching the news the other night, they had a picture of a band shell in City of Cloquet. They were painting murals on the inside of it and it looked like our old band shell, really. And I don't know, I've never, I thought ours was always kind of a one of a kind, but they might've been built in the same era. I don't know. But that was just a comment. But I will talk to Jimmy Lukic about that. Maybe he's aware of it. You know, for an architect to go look at something like that, maybe it'll help him in whatever we're doing over here. I don't know. My other concern is on the news, several weeks ago, I don't know if it was a dog whistle or what, but the border patrol were flashing around a bunch of scary things that were being invaded by illegals, you know, like 1,100 crossings in the last whatever year or several months. And I think it's an important topic and I haven't heard nothing from anybody about it. And I've talked to people, are you aware of any, you know, people getting busted or anything? Nobody knows anything about it. One gentleman I know lives on the river, several, you know, 10 miles downstream, he sees a helicopter going by every day now. I've seen him flying over at Ratford Lake when I was heading down 53. I don't know, I'm, I'm assuming they're border patrol helicopters, I don't know what else they be. I've seen him come here, turn behind our hospital and head into Canada. Now, that's not a life flight helicopter, they don't go into Canada.
I can, are you asking why that's going on?
I'm asking, is the council aware of any problems with illegally entry and drugs being smuggled across the border and?
I, I can't comment specifically to that, but I would say because I have a job that is aviation related, that there has been a lot of joint efforts between the Canadians and the USA in regard to that. The border is being watched very, very closely by both sides between Pembina, which is west and Pigeon River. So if, if you have an aviation radio, which most people don't understandably, you hear it all day long. So the ones behind the hospital are typically going, Canadian helicopters going to Fort Francis and then our side of things stop at the airport from time to time as well.
It was Representative Staber requested this to be put in the news and I think he was going to be requesting funding from the federal government to beef up the security along the border. And I, I don't know what that means. I really don't, but I just threw it out there.
Thank you. Anything else?
Hello, everyone. My name is Lois Lundin, 2222 Third Avenue East. I'd like to discuss a little clarification, I'd like a little more clarification on number 12, please. Were you discuss an auditor hiring an outside consulting firm? Mayor, were you talking about someone in addition to the people who conduct the regular audit or in place of, or what? Can you tell me more about that?
Well, is, is what I am concerned about is that if we, if the council, and we may, we may or we may not, because it'll be a council decision ultimately, if the council thinks that there's action that needs to be taken regarding city fund balances, I would lobby towards getting the appropriate help. And so that's what I mean by that.
Okay. So it isn't something necessarily that would have to have action taken on it tonight? And because there wasn't anything done tonight, it's not going to just go away. It could be brought up later on. You brought it as a point of discussion in this meeting?
Correct.
Okay.
So that it's, if, if I wanted to put it back on, it would, assuming we approve the agenda, which we have a history of, we normally do it, would be up for discussion.
Good. You know, like everyone else in the community, I'm concerned about the amount of money that we're spending on different things. And I'd sure like to find out in advance if we're sliding on a slippery slope. And before our city really got in trouble, that we would reach out for help. So I'm, I'm really pleased to see that on the agenda tonight, number 12. And I would encourage the, the council, please just keep a very close eye on it because there's a lot happening in our community and people are concerned. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Have a remind, or correspondence. We have a lobbying update, but we've pretty much already covered that throughout the meeting. So for reminders, the next regular city council meeting is Monday, April 7th, this year, 5:30 PM. That being said, this meeting is adjourned.